Good evening, directors, staff, and members of the public joining us and watching. I will now call this August 24th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. Before we begin, I would like to remind anyone speaking tonight to speak directly, clearly, and loudly into your microphone for the benefit of all of us, but especially for interpreters and those using closed captioning and those who normally rely on seeing faces to help them understand. We really do need to project our voices to be heard through masks, and if you do briefly remove your mask to speak, please remember to put it on properly after you've done spoken. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Director Elamin. Director Srio.
Here.
Director Inz.
Here.
Director Caprini.
Present.
Director Pauli is here. Chair Ellison.
Here.
Student Rep. Deborah Meskell.
Here.
Thank you. Our topic this evening is a literacy and academic update. Directors, we will take questions after staff has presented. Superintendent Graff, please go ahead with any opening remarks or start the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. Good evening, Student Representative Deborah Meskell, board members, staff, and members of the public who are watching with us this evening. Just before we begin the scheduled presentation, which will be done by Dr. Fearing and Senior Officer Moore, I wanted to briefly provide an update on where we are with our back-to-school planning. First, we're beginning to see several of our community and magnet schools projecting stable or increased enrollment for the fall, and I would say at this point we are cautiously optimistic that in many ways the work of the comprehensive district design is beginning to accomplish what we had hoped. We have students attending schools close to home and extending the notion that schools really are a vital anchor in their neighborhoods. And I would say cautiously optimistic because right now we're basing the validity of the projection on our historical summer no-show or turnover rates, and since the comprehensive district design is really interrupting business as usual, this will be a year of learning for all of us, so we'll continue to monitor that. I also wanted to acknowledge my appreciation and how grateful I am to our principals and their site teams who have been calling families on their rosters, both to welcome students and also to verify they will be coming in September at the start of school. And based on the calls, again, I would just say early indicators are promising. Also promising has been the professional development sessions that I've been able to join and welcome this past week in returning staff throughout our district. I would say that even though we are conducting our professional development virtually, the energy is quite palpable through a screen, if you will, and despite our need for wearing masks and social distancing as best as we can, I do get the feeling that staff are excited to be back in our buildings and our schools and anxiously awaiting the return of our scholars. Many of our sessions right now are on our new climate framework. They're focusing on deepening literacy initiatives across all grade levels, focusing on cultural humility and the ability to offer enrichment opportunities like middle school music and our new magnet school specialties, and really trying to, again, capture the creativity and passion of so many of our outstanding and dedicated staff, and I know that that will be true when we welcome back all of our teachers and ESPs for two full days of collaborative professional learning starting tomorrow. I should also note that we do have some challenges still, and most of them are centered around attracting and maintaining staff, especially in areas that our students and families depend on to help them have a holistically great educational experience. They include the areas of transportation, culinary or food service, and custodial. And we have talked a little bit about this already, but we do have an intense and creative recruitment going on right now, but our labor market that we're seeing across the city and across the nation, I think, is both highly competitive and tight as many areas have seen higher rates of retirement due to the pandemic. We will provide regular updates to the board and our families over the next couple of weeks, and again, just want to highlight that as a district, we have demonstrated and proven that we are resilient and that we are adept at overcoming many obstacles, even several challenges all at once, and we certainly ask for everyone's patience as we work to ensure a fantastic start to the school year for our students and families. We're expecting great things, and we'll continue to focus on ensuring the conditions for our students are optimal so that they can receive a well-rounded education. I also want to reflect on and learn from the past 15 to 18 months that we've had of teaching and learning during a global pandemic, and we're anticipating that we'll have some things to revisit, how our students were affected, what academic and social-emotional outcomes were impacted most, what supports should we shore up, and what lessons did we learn should things once again take a turn in the direction of worsening. So tonight, Senior Officer Eric Moore and Senior Officer Dr. Fearing, Amy Fearing, will help us understand what their teams have discovered through multiple data dives, and they're going to share how their teams are working with our associate superintendents, our administrators, teachers, other senior leaders, and others who will, again, use the data to help our students move forward. So thank you, Chair Ellison, for letting me set some context and as well as giving the board an update around how we're preparing for the start of the school year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Senior Officer Moore and Dr. Fearing.
So good evening, Chair Ellison, members of the board, superintendent. My pleasure to have the opportunity to present to all of you data on academic progress. Tonight, we're going to follow a Plan Do Check Act, Plan Do Check Act cycle. That is that we're wanting consciously to move away from just looking specifically at the data points, but everything that we identify are indicative of, in some cases, a way to measure how our students are doing, and so it's imperative, everything that we see, that we have to act and change the trajectories. We're in a constant space of continuous improvement, so as I present data and information, then you'll see that the flow will follow to Dr. Fearing, where she'll talk about what we're going to do about the information that you're seeing. So hopefully, that doesn't feel too awkward, but we thought that it's more indicative of how things actually work. We look at information, then we work together with various content units to be able to change what we're seeing. The PowerPoint contains, tonight we'll focus on math and literacy in the appendix, and it's a fairly long appendix, but in the appendix, we still identify things such as course failure on track, suspension rates, attendance rates, graduation rates, as well as suspensions. So you have that information in the appendix. We can certainly speak to it, but we really wanted to give substantial time for both math literacy and then allow at least an hour for questions. So certainly, we can refer reference to anything in the appendix for you, but we thought, just given the importance of math and literacy, that that should be our focus tonight. We also want to acknowledge that the data that we're seeing did not occur in a vacuum, that much of the data you're seeing was collected in some cases, when students were at home. Some of the assessment data may be missing because some of the assessments required in-person administration, so I'll point out those instances. The data gives us information, it doesn't give us a complete picture. Further on, when we talk about learning loss and how our students are doing and the work we need to do, particularly as we move forward into SRR3 and using dollars to address the concept of learning loss, we're going to be looking at multiple data points. We'll be looking at, your MCAs are coming out, I believe, this week, but really, you'll get a full picture in October as we do the in-person administration of our FAST assessment. We're also taking a look at some social-emotional learning data. There's a mental health survey as well identifying students' needs, so we're doing our best to look at multiple forms of data to be able to understand how our students are doing. And so I'm going to begin with a student survey, and this survey was given to grades four, eight, six, and 10 in the spring, and we really wanted to know how the pandemic impacted student's school experience. And without looking at all the data points, I do want to point out that for our American Indian students, our African-Americans, or Hispanic students especially, the pandemic actually impacted the experience worse than our white students, and there is a substantial difference between the groups. It really lends itself to the thought about the importance of having students in school, the importance of the relationship between the adult, the teacher, the support staff, and our students. And so something that we want to pay attention to is the role and value of school in-person learning and balancing that, obviously, with health concerns. But the group most negatively affected, if you look at your American Indian population, certainly significantly, I think that 68% of students said that the experience made it worse, the pandemic. The next slide actually reflects the difference in experiences between distance learning and in-person, and what we'd like you to glean from this slide is that for those students who went back and forth, so if you went, started, I believe, in-person, and then you went to distance, your experience identified was worse. Okay, so again, a slide indicating that the value of being in-person and having, again, the adult in front of the students and students having the opportunity to interact on a regular basis with each other, so. As we're looking at the context of students' experiences, and obviously, students' experiences different, differences by race and culture, we also want to acknowledge that all students coming back and returning to school are going to have some social-emotional learning and mental health needs, and I think it would be naive to think that all of us, no matter who we are, backgrounds, where we live in the city, have not been negatively impacted by the pandemic. And so as we bring our students back, we want to make sure that we're providing a supportive environment. We're also more deeply, we're deeply acknowledging the fact that students aren't feeling positive about their environment and who they are, and if the school environment doesn't honor their identities and their experiences, then that significantly impacts learning, so we're very cognizant of that. Some of the things that we're planning on doing as we're looking at implementing both social-emotional learning and mental health through a tiered approach, that for all students, for example, we get morning meetings where an opportunity to share their experiences, emphasizing student voice. There may be groups at more of a tier two, and then some students are going to need to have some more individual therapy, more individual conversations in depth about what their experiences have been, and so we're able to respond to that. We also have more culturally responsive social workers. We're clearly wanting to recognize the role of race, identity, gender, identity in general, and how that impacts learning and how that impacted the return to school. So we have a variety of resources on grief and loss, trauma, and we have a number of lessons ready to go for students when they begin day one. So the FAST, mention that about learning loss, and we'll have a more comprehensive understanding of learning loss, the impact of the pandemic. I do want to preface that by the fact that prior to the pandemic, and this is where we have confidence in the work that we do, prior to the pandemic, we had consecutive years of two percentage point gains in literacy. We were on track pre-pandemic to have about a five percentage point gain. What does that mean? That means that over that period of time, about 1,500 students became proficient at grade level. Okay, so we were moving in a positive direction, and so keeping in mind, as we're looking at learning loss, we're also taking into account the trajectory that we were moving on to. So when we present data that recognize, presents a picture of a lack of growth as well as a decline. So in some cases, we didn't decline significantly, but we were actually on a trajectory of improving more significantly. Again, the caveat, looking at the FAST, the FAST is assessment kindergarten, early reading, it looks at sight words, word segmenting, decoding words, and letter sounds. The early reading is an assessment that's performed individually, so the teacher performs that, or an adult performs that assessment one-on-one. There were two components to that assessment in which you could do remotely, but, sorry, there are components in which we didn't have data due in the spring, so we actually provided the assessment in the spring. The limitations in some cases were that when you're given the assessment, you need to make sure you have a secure environment when you give the assessment. But looking at the data here, 41% of students were proficient on the early reading composite in the spring, so we were able to give the assessment in the spring, and what you see are large proficiency gaps between whites and students of color. And so this isn't anything that's significantly different than information we've shared before, other than it does reify the need to focus on early literacy, because, as mentioned before, as you get to third grade, 85% of any gaps in achievement are even evident by the end of that third grade period of time. But you see, 41% of all students were proficient on the early reading assessment. This is an example of when I spoke earlier about gains and losses and potential gains. So this is looking at two areas, letter names and letter sounds, and you're looking at school year 2018, school year 2019, '20, school year 2021, in these two areas. And what I'd like you to take a look at is, for example, with letter names, we went from 51% of students proficient in that area to 64% in that year because of the focus on that area. Then we assessed again, then we dropped down to 53 percentage points. So again, the story says that we were on a positive trajectory, but then we started to decline based on the data. You see the same phenomenon with letter sounds. So you went from 62 to 55. So you still maintain some of the gains in some cases, but you do see a decline. This is looking at winter, early reading, again, looking at letter sounds, word segmenting and decodable words. You do see the declines from 2019, '20, '21. Of particular interest is the significant decline in letter sounds, and certainly, Dr. Fearing can elaborate on that decline, but we will leave that as the impact of the screen time of coming back and having that period of time of not having that direct instruction. And so you see that the impact of not being in school, significant decline in the letter Spring, early reading, again, this is looking at, you see the composite score decrease. Again, you see the significant decrease in letter sounds, as mentioned earlier. There is some decline in decoding words. The sight words are relatively constant, but again, what you're seeing is the impact of distance learning on early reading, particularly at the early reading at the letter sounds. First-grade reading assessment. So first-grade reading is, again, an individually administered assessment. Again, same limitations as mentioned earlier. The teachers were told to encourage students to complete the assessment on their own. However, it's not always possible to limit caregiver involvement. So in those cases where the assessment was given, students were able to take the assessment online, the components, that they were able to. You know, of course, there's still the opportunity for bias in caregiver supporting students taking the assessment. So we look at this data with caution because some of the scores may be inflated. This is why we say we're just waiting until October to get a true indication, but what we're seeing isn't a surprise in terms of gaps based upon race, and so you see fall, winter, spring, differences by race. You also see differences in gains for your white students versus some of your African-American and American Indian students in particular. Grades two through eight, grades two through eight, reading and math, the assessments were administered to students remotely. Spring, A reading, A math assessments were administered to students in grade two, either remotely or in person. Students in distance learning completed the FAST assessment at home, and in some cases, the assessment was done in person for those students that were in school. Again, when you took the assessment in person, you're in an environment that's free from distraction. Again, when you're taking the assessment in distance learning, you don't necessarily have that guarantee, so it has to do with just the testing environment. And then the completion rates, 19, '20, about 94% completion rate in that area. 20, '21, we had a completion rate of 88%. So the completion rates actually were surprisingly robust relative to the pandemic. Winter, so compare winter, 18, 19, 19, 20, '21, 20, '21. You're seeing previous year, you're seeing an increase of about three percentage point in math, two percentage points in reading. Again, you see the decline in mathematics. You see a one percentage point gain in reading. When we're able to present the MCA data, I think, this is going to mirror what we see with, I mean, so a comprehensive assessment. That is that prior to the pandemic, again, math would be the area that was flat in terms of its growth, so you're going to see more of a decline. In reading, we were in a positive trajectory academically, so then you're not going to see as much learning loss in that area. Okay, so that's, this data is pretty much what we expect. Spring FAST, reading and math. Again, mathematics, you're seeing relatively flat reading. You see an increase in four percentage points. So certainly, a lot of information presented to you, both in reading and math, so I'm going to turn to Dr. Fearing to talk about what we can expect to see.
Good evening, Board Directors, Chair Ellison, Superintendent, and the public. So we've had a pretty quick overview of the data that we do have that represents last year during the pandemic, so I think one of the overall things to realize and to acknowledge is that the pandemic did impact our outcomes in literacy and math as we expected, that's nationally. I'm on a call every month with CAOs across, you know, the nation, and everyone is saying the same thing, but really, how do you recover, and then how do you then accelerate coming out of, hopefully, coming out of the pandemic this next year? So we do know that specifically in literacy, the foundational skills, letter recognition, letter sounds, one unit awareness, et cetera, phonics, were definitely impacted. We do know, I think Senior Leader Moore pointed out with letters, sounds, that assessment actually gets exponentially harder through the year, so we do sometimes see, quite often, a decline as you go from fall, winter, spring, but you shouldn't see that much of a decline that we saw. So it's something to remember that the, you might say the assessment gets harder, but you're testing more letter sounds as you go through the year. So if you don't have the first 10, it's going to be difficult to get through in winter to do the next set. We do know that through grades one through five, as you saw, the literacy composite scores, they, of course, were impacted because of the different segments or strands that were showing students having, finding challenges in some of the most foundational pieces of literacy, and of course, still, gaps exist across the student groups. We did see grade one showing some small gains in proficiency, but this was the first year that we had all the first graders take the early reading, and so the information that you saw was actually through the year. It wasn't comparison of year after year, and so it was really great to see those gains, but I think as we move into next year, we want to continue to give the early reading to all first graders, so then we have a comparison from this past year to this upcoming year. And then also, one of the things that this data does represent is that there was actually more time for our teachers to do intentional grouping just because of technology and the ability to maximize or leverage distance learning. So we did see that there were students who were able to be grouped more appropriately, and the teacher was able to get to them or have a support staff or someone there available to work with students directly in regards to their level. So it's one of those things that we want to continue and take forward in understanding how positively impacted it did help students to have more intentional grouping and not just be in the entire class the whole time. So moving on to school year 21, '22, which is this upcoming year, you can see we have many things upcoming in literacy. This was part of our literacy plan as we were moving forward. It is one of those things where, when you look at the list, it can be overwhelming, thinking about how are we going to put all of this in place, but it actually makes sense sequentially based on what we see from the data this past year and how we should move forward. So I do want to point out some of the things that are happening actually right now. We started last week with our building administrators and professional development, and so they will all have gone through dyslexia training. It's a pretty comprehensive training. I actually went through it with their Lexia Academy, and it gives really good information, but it also helps you understand the fundamentals and the characteristics and how we can actually improve better through our structured literacy approach, through our instruction with our students to then help our building administrators and our teachers understand that better. The other thing I just wanted to point out on the first bullet is that we will also be offering structured literacy professional development, so we will have that as well available for our building administrators, and then our teachers coming up here at the end of this week during the academic PD will also have opportunity to take that. And for those of you who want a little bit more explanation, so the structured literacy is really going to be focusing on those foundational skills that you see there at the top, and really, then, they have about, I think it's six practices, right, on how to implement it. So it's really the explicit, systematic, cumulative, multimodal application, and how to then structure your literacy block. So it's really about the instructional practices and also what you should be doing. And then just highlighting a few other things here on the list, we will make sure that there is a foundational skill instruction time during the K-2 literacy block. It is worked into that 140, 120 minutes, 140 minutes time, but we want to make sure that it's actually present and it's in enough time for our teachers and our students to adequately get through the structured literacy that we want to see during that foundational time. And then, of course, continuing with our screeners and our diagnostics, and that's really, really important because the data that you just saw was really a snapshot in time, and it's really back in the spring. So we had a lot of students attend our summer programming, you know, other students had other opportunities in their communities, so they're going to be coming at very different levels even than they were in the spring. So we want to make sure that we're getting the most up-to-date information through our assessments, and then also having a plan as soon as possible for the students, depending on where they're at. Oh, the last one I do want to point out is that we were able to increase, if not double, our diverse and culturally sustaining texts, because that's one of the things that we had the opportunity to do during distance learning because we're not in our buildings. Our media centers were being, it's called weeded or gone through and curated out, and then we were able to replace a lot of those texts, and so we have a lot more diverse texts coming in, and some of our libraries have all brand-new books. So I think that's a piece that even though it may not be an instructional practice, it's resources and materials that our students are really excited about, and that is part of our literacy plan. Just to highlight quick, we wanted to pull out special education as well, just to reiterate again, our special education students are general education students first, but there's some additional pieces that we are going to put into place for this upcoming year. So we started off in August, we actually had a literacy institute for our special education educators. This was available to building administrators, teachers, support staff, et cetera. And then we also, sorry, we also had, we also have additional interventions and programs available for our students that really focus specifically on those essential foundations in literacy, and we'll also see this in math. And then the backwards design for culturally linguistically diverse classrooms, professional development that really integrates that curriculum transformation piece, but also with what we expect and what we need for our students with special needs. And then, of course, the last bullet, I think, is really important, that we also put into place for our general education is these touch points so that it isn't one sit-and-get professional development at the beginning of the school year, but that actually it's reoccurring and spiraling through the year to continue to build the capacity of our staff in our schools.
The I station is a... The IStation is a kindergarten assessment, K-two assessment for students in their dual language. So the idea is that as students are taught in the dual language programming in Spanish, we need an assessment to test literacy in the home language in which the, in the language in which the students are being taught in the classroom. And so what is twenty-two percent of students overall were identified as being proficient. And you see the decline kindergarten, grade one, grade two. You know, thirty-one percent of students were proficient in kindergarten, going down to a low of three percent grade two. So something to take a look at that as we go to the next slide, we'll talk about how we're going to use the data.
Yes, so Senior Leader Moore has given a little background around IStation. So again, it's pretty new in the long scheme of things of what we're implementing here in Minneapolis. But it really is to give us a better complete picture of our literacy in our dual language sites. So you can see from last year, the information that we got, it showed us that, I'm on the third bullet here, students who scored at IStation levels four and five are above grade level in Spanish literacy. So we are doing well in what we're doing, we can always do better. But I think it also shows that we cannot just, we have to make sure that our measurements are matching the language of instruction and what we're expecting out of our students. Just moving on to what we're planning to do, moving on into this year. So you can see in the first bullet that really we want to make sure that the data dives that we're doing in regards to literacy are really the same conversations we're having around our Spanish literacy as well. So it's looking at not just, you know, how are students doing in language proficiency, but really looking at that literacy level and are they taking it to the same, you know, level that we expect in English literacy in our monolingual schools? So making sure that the data dives are occurring to the same depth and complexity. Is it, it's not close enough? Oh, it's not on. Well, hopefully I was using my teacher voice and yelling loud enough. And then the second bullet that you see here is really, I've mentioned this before in other presentations about having decision trees, but really what that means is you have a student performing at this level. Now, as an educator, I can see what are my different choices and how I can proceed depending on how they're performing. And that is a very fluid process. You might go up, you might go down, you might go over. But making sure that we have the resources and the professional development for our teachers to be able to make informed choices in Spanish literacy. Because we focused a lot, of course, in English literacy, but we want to support our dual language sites in Spanish literacy.
Math diagnostics. I want to begin with the kindergarten concept of math assessment given in person. So this was, this is spring data. It includes seven tasks. So this, these are areas that are really focused on numeracy. And so one way to, there's seven areas, but I'll give you an example. For example, the activity of Forward Counting where the student has to count up to thirty-one. So thirty-one, those students, fifty-six percent of students were able to count up to thirty-one. Okay, so you see a significant number by the end of kindergarten, that forty-four percent that are not able to count up to thirty-one. And so this gives us an understanding of the type of work that we need to do with our students academically. You also see on the next slide, the difference between spring eighteen nineteen to spring twenty twenty-one. You do see a slight increase in that percentage, which is positive. And again, as we dig deeper into the impact of the pandemic, we'll be able to better understand that level of loss. And looking at the data, what I predict is that we were probably in line for a pretty positive trajectory and given the pandemic. We actually suffered, within that three percent gain, we were probably on track to gaining a bit more. This is again KCOM, so Concept of Math and looking at spring eighteen nineteen and spring twenty twenty-one. So you see a slight increase. What's interesting, there's a couple of groups, your African-American group that in particular, you see all other gains, groups gained. You do see a decline for your African-American student group. And so again, needing to go more in-depth and find out the phenomenon. Sorry, also your Asian group declined. But wanting to look at the phenomenon between those two groups to see what caused that decrease, just for those particular groups. First grade math. Again, fifty-one percent of first grade students were proficient on this assessment, three aspects of numbers. You see there, this involves six tasks. The Forward Counting number actually goes up to proficiency would be identified on Forward Counting, one oh eight to one twenty range. So if you're able to count up to one hundred and eight, that would be considered proficient. And so it gives us a target, gives us a read onto the work we need to do relative to what's expected in our standards. We're able to see differences by race. And so this is what we do is we disaggregate the data and we do see some significant gaps once again. Again, as we're talking about learning loss and also the opportunity gap moving forward, it's really important to know that these measures are cumulative. That is, by the time you get to the third grade, I mean, you're seeing a number of foundational skills, both in literacy and in mathematics. That's really the driver of much of the gaps that you see as students grow into fourth, fifth and above. And I will add, this was the first time actually that we gave the first grade district-wide. So one of the positives is it did allow us a better understanding of first grade numeracy. And so that was a positive and it's, will be used to, again, this is a assessment that's really used to support instruction.
So, just had to check to make sure it was on. So as Senior Leader Moore said, this was the first year that we had a requirement for our first grade COM or Concepts of Math. In the past, it was, it was not required. And so we wanted to make sure that we set a great, or set a foundation for school year twenty twenty-one, even though we knew we were in the pandemic. But now we'll be able to see again, as we go into this next school year, the results with our rising first graders this upcoming year. I think some of the things that, when talking with the math team, that we identified, what does this data really tell us? It's really looking at, very similar to the literacy, the foundations of literacy, but really numeracy with our K-one students, really thinking about how are we going to work with our educators to really make sure that during that math block, just like they have a literacy block, they're working on number identification, one more, one less, counting forward, counting backward. And again, those are things that don't have to happen specifically in the math block. These are things that you can integrate through the entire school day, but you have to be conscious of it to give students additional opportunities to grasp those different skills. The other thing that the data also shows us is that classroom teachers had more time to do these one-on-one assessments and really to get to know their students and their levels in mathematics. And so it's something that we want to continue to consider as we even move back in person. And how do we create structures and supports for our educators to have that opportunity to really get to know their students through these assessments and to understand where they're at? So it's not just a number, a score, but actually having that time to sit with the student and get that information. As you know, we're in the middle of a curriculum adoption for math. And so this school year will be piloting K-five, so K-two and three-five, because we were unable to pilot last year K-two because we were not in person. But with the curriculum, math adoption comes a lot of professional development. So I think we'll also see some positive impacts, not just having different learning materials and resources, but that our educators are also engaging in professional development specifically around early math. And I would say the last thing I would like to highlight here is that because we were distance learning virtual, students had the opportunity to engage more in software that we have, like Lexia Core Five for literacy, Dreambox for math. And a lot of those are adaptive, so students are moving up and moving out or moving down depending on what they're showing. And so they're really getting that one-on-one through that software exactly where they're at and plus that challenge that they need to move up. So that was one thing that we saw as a positive pieces that we were able to implement some of the software pieces that we've always had for our students, but it did have a positive impact with our students. Oh, there you go. I thought I was missing something there. So just to highlight again with, in, within K-five math, the special education, you can see there's a lot there that we have going on piloting equals curriculum, math recovery. We're training many educators in math recovery. I think the one thing that I wanted to highlight here, I wanted to highlight in literacy, but I'll just highlight it here is that all of our building administrators last week received what was called a special education intervention support plan. I know it's a lot of words, but essentially, they received for their school interventions and programs and strategies that are particular to their buildings and the students that are incoming to their building. So instead of having this whole menu of things that they can choose from and teachers are picking and choosing, the building administrator actually got a very comprehensive packet of information about, here are the students that are coming to your building. Here are the interventions that would be appropriate for them, when and how are they implemented? And here's a professional development that we're going, we are going to offer to your teachers or to you for you to implement that. And that's going to be evident both in literacy and math and really tying together. Here are your incoming students, they may not have been the same students they had last year, but they might be new to your site. But here's the profile of your school and the interventions and the next steps that we from the special education department would recommend to hit the ground running to work with these students based on where they were assessed coming in the fall.
Assessment in the middle grade. So typically what you end up seeing as you look at MCA scores and other assessments is you tend to see more movement in the early grade levels. Again, we've talked earlier about foundational skills, both in literacy and math, and the ability to move student's trajectory with the students gaining those foundational skills. By the time you get to middle school and looking at the data over a number of years, you don't see as significant movement in the middle years. And so the assessment, the Lexia Rapid Assessment was given to all students in fall two thousand and twenty. We were really trying to identify an assessment process that actually would change the trajectory of the data that we saw. So we, we were able to provide the Lexia Rapid Assessment for grade six eight. The assessment measures word recognition, vocabulary knowledge, syntax, reading comprehension. In addition to that, we also looked at data, previous data on track, our MCA. We still used our FAST as a screener, but we felt like we need to use the Lexia to really get at diagnosing some of the challenges that students have in literacy. Again, critical to diagnose some of the challenges at the middle grade levels because oftentimes that is indicative of the lack of foundational skills in literacy, in literacy. And so we also provided MRI math reasoning inventory as an optional math diagnostic as well.
So as Senior Leader Moore referenced, we did have the Lexia Rapid screener information from in the fall, which actually gave us some really interesting information that we did not necessarily have for our grade six through eight. So it really showed that many of our students lacked, again, the foundations, looking at word recognition, vocabulary knowledge, syntactic, et cetera. And so I think it was really good information for our teachers. They might have thought that this was what was happening with our grade six eight, but actually confirmed, like, we have the data to show that our students really in grade six eight also need that literacy support and direct instruction and systematic instruction. So moving into next year, we're going to require the FAST track, A-reading plus R-reading. And Senior Leader Moore can talk a little bit, I think he'll talk a little bit more about those assessments coming up. But we're going to do that instead of the Lexia Rapid because we believe that information will actually drill down more based on what we need. Also, our grade six eight teachers, we have a few cohorts that we're sending to the press training. And again, that's what we're also doing for our K-five. It focuses on the core instruction, but it also, what do you do if, right? And it gets more and more important as students matriculate through the grade levels if they are not actually at grade level. So what do you do when? And then the other thing I wanted to highlight right here is that we also saw the usage of Lexia Power Up. So elementary uses the Core Five and the six eight use Power Up. But that had positive impacts on our students as well because again, it's adaptive. So, you know, when a student grasped a concept, they could move on. They didn't have to wait for the class to move on. Or a targeted skill could be then worked on and, you know, students may be all over in terms of what skills they're working on. So continuing to use that, again, that's not the only tool, that's not the only instructional tool, but it's something to have as an educator to help differentiate for your students who are at a variety of literacy levels. And then of course, for our grade six eight, so important is the diverse and culturally sustained texts. So again, like I had mentioned in our K-five libraries, we also are doing this in our middle schools. And this is really important because you still, you still see students very excited about texts, excited about books, going into a whole different world with that. And we want to make sure we have texts that represent them, their cultures, linguistics, et cetera. So we have done a kind of an overhaul of our media centers to make sure that we have texts available for our students in that way. So the math reasoning inventory, I was able to watch a video and see this happen with the teacher giving this assessment. So it really isn't a paper pencil test. You know, a problem will be posed, it might be a fraction problem, and the student will articulate how they're solving the problem. You know, and so I might ask this whole group, what's one-fifth plus one-eighth? And we might have seven different ways of getting to the answer. And so we want our teachers to be able to listen to that and then listen to see if, if the actual thinking of getting to the answer is on the right track or if there's some misunderstandings, right? Or kind of survival tactics, as we might call them, because that might work for that problem, but it's not going to work, you know, down the road. And so the math reasoning inventory does take time because it's one-on-one and you're letting the student just go through the whole thought process of how they're getting to the answer. So it is very time-consuming, but the teachers really report that they really got to understand better the thinking, the mathematical thinking behind what students were using to arrive at the answer. And so with distance learning, we had more of an opportunity for our teachers to engage and do the math reasoning inventory. What we're going to do as we move into next school year again is to really promote and encourage that our teachers are able to do this, have a schedule where they can work with students and give the math reasoning inventory, but also make sure that our number sense routines are part of the math class. It's very similar to what I was talking about with the foundations in literacy and making sure that's part of the literacy block. We want to make sure that our number sense routines are also part of our math class. And then the other one that I just want to point out here is that making sure that after they give the math reasoning inventory, they're following their decision tree of what needs to come next. So if a student arrives at the right answer but actually took the wrong path there and it's going to, you know, present an issue down the road with a more complex problem, they're actually working with the student to correct that thinking so that it doesn't become an issue later.
I get to do a due slide. So grade six twelve, so I'll do the assessment portion. As Dr. Fearing mentioned, we're moving to the FAST track. And so essentially what that's doing is that's combining both the screener and the diagnostic. The goal of all the assessment that we're attempting to do is we're trying to get the best information possible to our teachers in the least amount of time. So by, FAST has actually come out with the FAST track that only has four minutes. So you're not having to, we significantly reducing the number of assessment and we're getting actually better information for grade six eight. We're also looking at aligning of all our assessments. So we're looking at changing from the MAP, MAP is grade nine. And so we're going to do a FAST, A-math, in math, grade nine. So we'll have a K, if you will, K-twelve alignment with the FAST. So again, this is more familiarity with the assessment. And so we think we're, again, we're going to be able to better support the data use with the changes in assessments for grade six twelve.
So I mentioned some of these already, so I won't repeat myself. But again, so while the press for grade six eight and then also reading apprenticeship, we'll be piloting that for some of our schools. And again, that's really having our students, just like I was talking about the math reasoning for math, but for as readers. Like, how is it that you're reading? It's kind of the thinking about how you are a reader and then what happens if I get challenged in what I'm reading? What strategies do I have in my toolbox to correct? So if you've, you know, been reading- So if you've, you know, been reading a book and you get through the paragraph and you realize, I don't even remember two words that I just read, you have a strategy that tells you to go back and reread it and pay attention for most important words or to, et cetera. So that is really the reading apprenticeship is, um, training our teachers to work with their students, really think very closely about how they're reading, and if they're finding challenges, what can I do to then be able to comprehend the text better if I'm not comprehending? Um, and then for math, um, I've mentioned this before, but we will continue with, we call it O-GAP, but it's really professional development that focuses on numeracy, um, with our teachers. It is, um, one of the highly rated, highest rated professional developments that we've been giving in math, um, with all of our teachers. And so we'll continue with that because it really gives them specific strategies of how to look at their assessments, what are the next steps, um, and then how to continue to, um, change instruction, um, to get to work on the numeracy results. Um, and the last one I would mention for math is, um, we are, our, we'll have professional development at the end of this week about productive math struggle. And so, um, when I talked to the math team, it was really about, you will not always get the right answer in math, but how do you build your stamina so that you can go back and try again and that you can use different strategies to get to the answer that you need to? And I think this could actually be productive struggle in anything, um, but our math team is really focusing on how to cultivate that within our students and how to find joy in mathematics because that is as equally as important as having the skills of being able to do it, is to be able to be challenged and to get through it and to get to the answer.
Again, from an assessment standpoint, uh, what we see at the high school level is the addition of the FAST for grades nine, twelve. Um, what, you know, what's interested at, at the high school level is typically what we've had in the past, um, is we have not had a, an assessment, uh, for mathematics at, at grade nine. And so you'll see for, well, special educa, special education, um, and regular education that, um, um, we see the addition of the FAST grade nine, and so this is gonna give us better information, uh, to be able to guide, uh, instruction. Uh, we're also, um, there's also, uh, doing additional work around reviewing assessment data, create school profiles. Um, and so this is, uh, this really deeper work around looking at the data, um, and making sure that we are able to look at the data and inform the types of interventions that are needed. You get to do that.
It's on questions, sorry. Um, so for six, twelve, um, special education, I just wanted to highlight that we'll continue with the Read One Eighty, um, and then also make sure that we, the Systems Forty Four is another part of the Read One Eighty system. Um, and then also nine, twelve has called what's Reading Plus, so it's a little different than the Read One Eighty program. Um, and then we'll continue also for math in special education with Alex. So that's, um, to support student learning and growth in, um, math as well. So there's a lot of other things, but, um, they're on the slides, so those are the ones to highlight for special education.
Now we're ready for questions.
Thank you, um, Dr. Ferring and Senior Officer Moore. Um, board members, if you have any questions, hit your, ask a question or on your backs. Um, that'll give you a call. Um, thank you for, I loved the presentation on the math thinking. I remember when I was teaching math, um, many years back, Pythagorean theorem, and, uh, I had a student who could do it some other way and got the answer right every single time. And I had a student who was struggling with the way I was doing it. First student was like, teacher, teaching it, you know, the hard way. There's an easier way to teach this. So I love getting behind what students are doing. Um, any questions? Director Caprini, please? Sorry, I think that's me.
Oh, yes, thank you for the presentation. So, uh, you mentioned, uh, the math reasoning inventory, and, uh, one of the things I heard that I really liked is that teachers were able to spend more time with that, you know, with their students having that one-on-one opportunity. And I'm wondering, um, was that because of distant learning or what were they doing differently that gave them that opportunity to do that? Now, will they be able to mirror that, um, once we get back into the classroom? So is it a matter of needing, um, extra, extra support in the classroom? Like, what were the other students doing?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Um, that's a really good question because we had actually started the math reasoning inventory before distance learning, but we, what we saw is that teachers had more opportunity to complete more while we were in distance learning. I think one factor, um, interestingly enough, is that in distance learning, you're taking away a lot of transition time. So if you think about walking a class down to the bathroom and then taking them here and taking them there, those minutes add up, and in distance learning, you really did have a lot of those transit, you had stretch breaks, but you didn't have all these transition times. So I think it just added more time, um, for educators to work with students. Um, I think also being able to have, um, support staff that could, um, easily, more easily manipulate in the schedule in a distance learning, like just jump into that classroom and jump into that classroom versus, you know, in a brick and mortar, that's gonna take more time and more, um, complex scheduling. Um, and I also think that, um, our teachers were able to think differently about how they were instructing and making sure that, you know, if you're going to do intentional grouping, that's your opportunity then to sit with this one student, do the assessment, spend some time. Because I think, you know, often we get kind of in our own routine of how we do things and we forget there are, there are other ways, um, to modify or to have that time to do those types of assessments. Um, but I think overall, as we move into this next year, our math team has really been focusing on having, um, teachers, this will be part of the professional development, of course, but how do we incorporate, um, a math reasoning inventory as part of the learning process? Cause for sure, it's not just take a test and you're done, but it's actually, there's a lot of learning happening even with the student as part of it. So it could be part of the instructional time, cause I'm gonna sit with the student and do this. Other students are working, you know, on Dream Box or other, um, type of, um, o- other types of work or activities that they could be doing. I would say our students now, um, I think are very much used to being able to be, to, to be in a group and to be able to see, like, what do they need to do during this block with, with guidance or without? I think that we have built in, um, especially in our math block, opportunity for our students to, to work a little bit more independently. Again, not saying that they don't need a teacher or that they don't need the time with the teacher, but I think having distance learning has really opened up the ability for our educators to be innovative and creative and really prioritize. Like, what is it that we want to be doing with our students? You know, contact, relationship type of thing? What are other, uh, software innovative approaches that are available for our students to be learning independently in adaptive ways so that I can then be here and work with students? But it is definitely something that will be, that, um, in scheduling and also in how we support, um, all of our teachers and our support staff to coordinate and make sure the schedules work.
So, so those teachers that had that experience that they were able to spend more time one-on-one with students, did you find that those teachers were, where were those teachers in the district? So I guess, you don't have to answer it that way. Um, the struggling schools, the schools where the students really need the extra support? Or was it just a school where, you know, there was a student that, you know, didn't need that much of support, but still was struggling a little bit? So I guess I just wanna know.
Yeah.
Where, where are we at with that? Like, what schools was it?
Um, I'll have to get back to you, uh, cause we can probably heat map where we know that, um, math, the math reasoning inventory take, took place, cause again, it wasn't a requirement, um, it was just very strongly encouraged and we had professional development on how to do it and, uh, what things to look for and what would be your next step. So, um, I can pull up that data.
I'd appreciate it because I, I think it would give us an opportunity to know where we need to make sure we're putting those extra supports in those schools.
Yeah.
Um, to make sure that that experience is, is still happening.
Yes, of course.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Student Representative Gavramasca?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to kind of agree with Director Caprini. I think it's really important for students to get that one-on-one support with teachers and to have a better understanding of where they are struggling. Um, especially for math, um, you know, I also had the experience where I was doing, like, all my math problems differently, like, I had learned them differently in school than the way that my teacher was teaching them. Um, and so being able to, like, work one-on-one with her and understand, you know, like, this is how I do these things and, you know, kind of training the way that I do, do those things to prepare myself for, like, more advanced problems was very important. Um, I think it's also very important to make sure that across the board at all schools, especially where students are struggling. Um, and I also wanted to ask, when it came to more diverse texts in schools, are we making sure that schools with more diverse student populations are getting those texts and getting those books in their libraries?
Yes, thank you for the question. Um, so, um, one of the things that, um, when I, when I came into this position, one of the things that I noticed when I was visiting schools, um, and then in consult, in, um, consulting with our, uh, library and media, uh, district-wide, uh, lead member, was really the, um, kind of the inconsistency of how our libraries and our materials and our resources were being evaluated, curated, used. You know, I could walk into a classroom library and see, you know, books that were many years old and not necessarily representative of the students that were in school, but that's all they had, right? So, um, I think that was, when, when I first started, it was really about, like, how can we create this plan that's, like, kind of tiered and layered? Cause you can't do all of it at once, you know, it's a pretty expensive type of production. But how do we lay this out in multi-years so that we can make sure that our schools and our classrooms have texts that our students are excited about, represents them, um, and that they're able to read, right? Um, the most frustrating thing for a student is to pick up a book they want to read, but then they can't, they don't have access to it. Um, and so we started kind of with a five-year plan, but then with, um, um, from Senior Leader Moore with integration money and then also through, um, the different ESAR, et cetera, uh, we had the opportunity to, um, expedite that. And then we really capitalized on that we didn't have people in our buildings, you know, during last year. So we could go in and, and do some major overhaul and not have to kind of work around the school schedule. So, um, we had staff working all last spring and then also through the summer. Um, and so all of our libraries are on the list, um, and it was a very comprehensive process. We had many different departments, many different stakeholders reviewing and looking. Um, and with text in, we had parents suggesting, what books do you have in your house? You know, definitely we could think about having them here in our system as well. So, um, and it wasn't about just, you know, throwing away all the old books, cause if we knew a book was highly, highly used at a school, we wanted to replace it with a new book. Um, the same book, but new, so it wasn't, you know, falling apart or whatnot. So, um, I was really excited to see, um, I was part of the Bookmobile this summer, rode around and just was able to see some of the texts that we were offering out to students in the Bookmobile, and it was just very diverse, um, and incredible to see these kids walk up and be like, I can take them, I'm like, yeah, I'll take them, you know, and I can take two, well, you know, maybe three, but, you know, so it's like, it, it's just, it really reaffirms that we need to make sure that what we're putting out there for our students, um, is really, was represented to them and what they want to read. Maybe not so much what I think is great reading, but we want our students to, um, really identify with the text that we have in our buildings.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is, thank you. Um, I would say that it wasn't until ninth grade where I was, like, um, in class, requested to read a book from an African-American or, like, minority author, and it wasn't until middle school where I really had access to books with characters, minority characters or characters that look like me. I think it's really important to kind of push that, especially in, on, like, early stages of learning in kindergarten and elementary schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Director Surya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, can you share a little bit more about the new math pilot, uh, curriculum? Just to give me a little more, you know, clarification, like, visioning of it? And, uh, does this have a track record at other districts, uh, that have used it?
Yeah, so thanks for the question. Um, so it's been a pretty comprehensive process and, um, as much as we wanted to kind of phase in K two, three, five, uh, six, twelve, it kind of has been, been bunched up now with, uh, K two and three, five. Um, and what I can do is I can send to you kind of the, the whole, um, the process, but also the, the vendors that we're piloting and how they were chosen, and then the justification why those were the ones being chosen. So I do know investigations, um, for, um, elementary, or I guess we're all in elementary K five. Um, I'm trying to pull from memory the, the second vendor, but we are piloting two vendors. Um, and then we have, we're specific about also piloting at our dual language sites as well because all the vendors had to have, um, a component for our dual language site. So, um, they're also part of the pilot, um, and they actually have to pilot both K two and three, five, because we didn't have enough of the dual language sites to, to parse that out. But, um, I'll get you that information, um, that gives all the, you know, who the vendors are, the justification and how they were chosen, our stakeholder.
I appreciate that, and also I understand that, uh, there has been a change in the special education department. And how do we anticipate this change impacting, uh, uh, special education services and what are the challenges that we do foresee in this, uh, transition?
So I can respond to that. Thank you, Director Surya, for the question. Um, what we did, um, recently is we had a, uh, Associate Superintendent take another position outside of the district, and so as part of the transition, Associate Superintendent Cox, who oversaw, uh, special education as well as several other departments, was moved into the elementary portfolio. And so, um, she's still a direct report of mine, uh, Dr. Ferring is a direct report of mine. And so I think we saw this as an opportunity to, um, take what is often, uh, uh, department and compartmentalized as an add-on, um, you know, additional services that we provide for our students. Um, we really saw it as an opportunity to, to, with our alignment of both the Senior Officer, um, Ferring and Associate Superintendent Cox reporting to me, that we'd have that much greater intersectionality and, and cross-communication with things. So I don't anticipate that we'll have a, a gap in terms of our service and level of service. The professional development still has to come through, um, academics, it still has to come through the Associate Superintendents. We have three directors right now in special education who are well-versed in their different areas and departments that they oversee. Um, so now it's just a matter of filling that interim position, and in the time being, it's Dr. Ferring who, um, oversees, you know, the academics and special education. Um, I oversee the Associate Superintendent's in her position as well, so, and we have, uh, weekly meetings, um, individual meetings and departmental meetings. So in terms of the, the changes, I'd, um, at level of service, you won't see any change to the level of service. It's just a matter of how we, uh, align actually and improve the communication and the coordination, and I think you'll see some of that in, um, or hopefully you saw some of that in this evening's presentation as we're taking it as, you know, um, embedded in all of our work, not seen as a, a separate one. And it goes back to the multi-tiered systems of support. When we talk about providing services for all of our students, not all of our students require special education services, but all of our students have very, um, core essential needs, and so that's what we're, we're saying as part of, uh, tier one or core. All of that will go to, um, students across the district, and then depending on the, the level of support that's needed, we would differentiate, um, potentially through special education services. But thank you for the question. It's something that we've, you know, had ongoing conversations about, and, um, again, I saw it as an opportunity to further align our, our supports for students.
Thank you. Director Enz?
Thank you, Ma'am Chair. Um, I wanna say thanks for, uh, um, this presentation and, uh, it, it makes me reflect on where we were at, uh, six years ago with, um, literacy and academics in the district and how far we've come and all the work that we're doing now. And, um, it's, it's, feels really good to know that we're moving forward and, um, you know, to see the, the little do things in the top left of all the presentation slides, um, it's not lost, so, uh, I'm really grateful to that, um, Dr. Ferring and Superintendent Graff. Um, I know when we came in, we didn't have, we didn't have a reading curriculum, right? Um, when you came in and, uh, you know, we've come a long way since then, so, uh, thank you for that. And I see some of that work now mirrored in the math curriculum and some of the things that we've learned from that adaptation, now part of our adaptation of our math curriculum. Um, it's not, you know, I don't think anybody's really surprised that, um, we didn't see the progress we were hoping for last year, um, at the beginning of the, well, at the beginning of the previous year, I guess. Um, uh, but, you know, I know we're working on things, and so, um, I, it's good to see that we learned a lot last year, even though, you know, we didn't get the results that we wanted, we still are, um, we're, we're taking what we've learned from that, um, process and, you know, from our disappointments or whatever it is, we're trying to, you know, make lemonade out of lemons, I guess, is one way of looking at it, right? So, uh, appreciate that, and I'll just use an example, like, for me, you know, my life, home with my kids all year last year, I'll tell you, they actually, they really liked the Dream Box Math, and I liked it, cause I could just tell them to do it. And they would do it, and they actually would ask me to do it, cause they were competitive about it, and, you know, that, I think there was some kind of reward thing built into it, and they were always... were always like arguing about who had more, whatever. So, I don't know if they learned any math through it, but they certainly were engaged with it. If you tell me they're learning math through it, that's great. But, so, you know, that would be, I think, an example of something we learned in the distance learning environment, right, is how some of these applications are functional and can be used independently. And it gets me thinking as a teacher, too, about some of those things that I learned last year as well. So, thank you for that. Also, I wanted to highlight the Spanish literacy and just, you know, make the point again that, you know, it's unfortunate. We see the value in our students being multilingual. And, you know, I think if you compare our district to other districts, we'd score off the charts, right? And it's unfortunate, the state, federal government, you know, they don't see those assessments as valuable in the same way that we do. And I think our culture at large doesn't value our kids in the same way. I mean, we're preparing students to be global citizens. And, you know, we're doing a good job in that respect, in terms of, you know, are our kids multilingual and multicultural? And our curriculum is, you know, I think, social justice oriented. I mean, I think we're just doing a lot of really great things that don't come up in these assessments that we're, you know, we're hammered over and over again with. So, I want to thank you for highlighting that, and I really appreciate it. Some questions that I did have, and, you know, these are really, in some ways, kind of esoteric questions, but I'm curious about them. The screener that we do, the literacy screener, I'm wondering, who gets that? Does everybody get that screener? Like kindergarten kids, they get it right when they walk in the door? And I'd be interested in seeing some of that, and the results of those screeners relative to the progress that kids make. So we know, like, you know, where are they walking in? I want to see where kids are walking into our schools. And also, where are kids walking in, in first grade or in second grade? Where are they? And then where are they, you know, a year later? I'd like to see some of that kind of data disaggregated. I know we've looked at it from time to time, but I think it's important to show us, like, you know, let's look at what we're doing in our school. I know we get kids come and go, and it's hard to know sort of the difference sometimes. And we have looked in the past. It's like, let's look at the kids that have never left Minneapolis and see how they're doing sometimes. So, I would appreciate that. And then, the other question, I guess, a couple, one is the, when is it appropriate to give literacy tests to kids in kindergarten and measure their proficiency? Just anecdotally, I think that, you know, kids are in, a lot of cases, in totally different developmental places when they enter kindergarten, right? So, when we say a kid is supposed to be proficient in kindergarten, I mean, I know just from the ages, like, we have kids that are a year and a half apart in terms of age in kindergarten, right? So, we're measuring a kid who's six and a half and next to a kid who's five in terms of proficiency. I mean, I think that's, you know, that has implications on what we learn and how we teach them. And so, I'm wondering, you know, when we say things like, I don't know, when we look at proficiency for kindergarten kids, right, it's hard to really understand the implications of that data. And so, I'm interested in learning more about what is appropriate and where kids should be in kindergarten. And I know it's kind of controversial for some parents that we do assessments for kids in kindergarten. And, you know, I would like to learn more about that. And then, I don't remember what this question means, so I'm not going to ask it. But, maybe I'll remember and I can ask Chief Officer Moore later. But, again, just thanks a lot for all the work that you're doing, and I really appreciate it. And I'm grateful for where we've come in the last five years. I wish we, like a lot of people, I wish we could just erase the last year and a half, and we'd have a better idea of what kind of progress we've made. But I like what I'm seeing in terms of the work that we're doing.
If I may respond, Chair Elson. So, Director Enz, thank you for your comments. You touched on a couple of things that I think we've been talking about as a senior officer team or administration, and it's recognizing accomplishments that you have even through challenges. And I think that that's what the pandemic has really forced us to do, is to take a look at all the challenges we have and recognizing those accomplishments or those opportunities. And you heard Dr. Fearing speak to it a little bit tonight, when Director Caprini asked, how do you find the time in those spaces? You know, we're doing things differently, obviously. And it is about having a growth mindset or problem-solving. So again, to go back to the discussion of how our students are working through math concepts and modeling that for a teacher to review, really trying to create a growth mindset.
Oh, I did want to answer that question. I forgot. It was thirteen fortyths, I believe, was the answer to your.
Three.
And you want to know how I did it? I multiply the denominators, right, for the common denominator, and then you add those two together, and that's the numerator.
Three and a.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're, obviously, taking in what you heard for the math equation. For those of you who missed it, it was one-fifth plus one-eighth, I think, is what Dr. Fearing referenced. So again, it is about, you know, problem-solving growth mindset. You talked about the screener and comparison to outcomes. We'll certainly do that. I think we were looking at this as a baseline establishment. And future presentations will incorporate, you know, kind of the progress and growth of things. So we'll have that in there. And then the discussion around when is it appropriate to measure proficiency for kids? You're absolutely right. Developmentally, there are, I think, a lot of different opinions about that. We are fortunate to have a very strong preschool or, you know, early childhood program where we do a goal assessment. And that really does hit more than just the academics. It hits the social well-being of a student and to help understand developmentally where they are and their ability to learn things like letter sounds or letter recognition. So when you talk about what assessment we're using, it's more about, at the early childhood level, what's developmentally appropriate for them socially as they come into the context of school. And then, once those are solidified or you have the opportunity to practice that, you can then start to separate out the letter recognition, the number sense, the counting. And I would say that those are, again, developmental skills, that for some students, they're able to grasp them much faster than others. And you, having twin boys, know that they're totally different learners, different styles. And just because they have the same chronological age doesn't mean that they're going to develop at that level. So it does take a deeper understanding. And I think that also is highlighted with our discussion here tonight about educators really understanding students and spending the time, being able to have the time to sit with a child as they're working through, you know, whether it's just reading out loud or doing a math problem. There's so much value in that as opposed to just getting a sheet of paper that says you have, you know, 25 of the sounds memorized. So, it's certainly one that you'll have differing opinions on. But as an educator myself, I'm very much grounded in those opportunities to get the developmental needs of the students addressed first.
Thank you. Director Ellamine?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of questions here tonight, and thank you for the presentation. It was a lot of information to take in prior to the meeting and here tonight. So I guess a couple of questions that I had in regards to the professional development, wanting to go a little more deeper into that, and share with me how, or share with us, how the professional development that the teachers are receiving. Is it just explained? Is it on a voluntary basis? Is it required? And then, once it has been done, how are we measuring what actually works? I guess I want to know a little bit more about that. And then, even with the letters grant, I mean, how are we piloting that into our curriculum? Will we be using it? Those are just a couple of questions that I have. And then also, I wanted to just mention the language. When I heard us talking about trying to, or looking at the different schools and profiling the schools on what the needs are. Profiling is not a good term. I think that should be used with, as we talk about the different schools, just because of the negative tone that comes with it. And language just makes a difference when you're talking to different cultures. So when we say profile, it's more of an assessment. Within our school, because profiling to me says that, okay, we are going to take these location conditions and characterize it as to what they need. But as an African-American mother or parent, our children, we want our children to be challenged. So our circumstances doesn't necessarily dictate what things should be provided at our school. So I hope I'm trying to describe this in the best way that I can. So, that just kind of stuck out with me. Just the language that we're using, when we're talking about our school's profiling is a negative tone when it comes to our African-American community. So if you can just share that, then I'll share my other questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Director Ellamine. So, going back to the professional development. So, in our school year calendar, much of our professional development, our district-wide professional development is offered now before the school year begins. So we have three days dedicated this week, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. What we know, though, that has the most impact is when it's job-embedded professional development. So we're really using this opportunity here at the forefront, one, to give information, but also to show and to model. But really, where we're going to see the most impact is in our schools where they have coaches. So we have K-two literacy and math coaches in every single one of our elementary sites. And then we have differentiation specialists in all of our K-eight sites. So for some sites, they have two staff on site. And so, we've been really working with those coaches, one, on coaching, but two, then, on having the content and the skills to be able to work with the teachers in a job-embedded environment. So, that could look many different ways. But one possibility would be that a teacher does a lesson, the coach is in there, observes, provides feedback, comes back the next day, observes another part of the lesson. It also could be the coach modeling the lesson, the teacher sitting back, observing, taking notes, and then having a conference afterwards, and then the teacher practicing that the next day. I was at Loring this summer. It was one of our literacy cluster sites. So I was able to actually see this in action, where the teacher had identified one part of the foundations of literacy lesson that she wanted more modeling from. So the coach stepped in, did it, the teacher was taking notes. The coach would actually step out once in a while and say, did you notice how I did this? Did you notice how the students were responding? And then the next time, it would be the teacher's turn to practice that, and the coach would sit back and then provide that feedback. And it's this ongoing cycle. That also then includes working with the grade-level team to then say, okay, now that we've done these different strategies and we've worked one-on-one, how is it that we can take a team approach, look at the data, and move forward as a grade-level team as well? So, you're only going to get so much done in a few days before a school year starts. There's a lot of things happening in our buildings and trying to get your classroom set up. So, you know, we want to present engaging professional development, but also giving information and also starting kind of that, that cycle of modeling and having teachers and educators, support staff, think about what their role is in that instructional practice. But then, the real part of the PD as the year goes on is really through our coaches and building administrators and that job-embedded cycle. And then, with the letters grant, I do need you to just maybe say just a little bit more about your question with the letters.
Well, I mean, I know that was a pilot that was just originally passed. And so I'm wondering, how are we going to, or will we be using it within our curriculum as we try to do some of the professional developments and things like that? So, will that play a part at all in our professional development within the curriculum, or?
So if I may, I think, Director Ellamine, you're referencing the statewide opportunity for letters that went through the legislature. And what I will tell you is that the materials that we currently use, Alexia, is actually the vendor that supports letters. So we specifically have not accessed anything related to letters at this time. I think what Dr. Fearing has shared was around the structured learning, but more specifically is the explicit instruction that takes place. And what she described this summer, taking place over at Loring, I was over there as well and observed the instruction. It was, you know, part of our programming. And I don't know if, maybe it'd be, you could share a little bit more about that and what that consists of versus, again, a program that was state kind of provided of a vendor. So our work is more focused on the actual instruction and what that looks like, the explicit instruction, as compared to purchasing a product or working with a vendor at the state level.
Yeah. And I would also say, there's many different vendors, organizations, or businesses that provide very similar professional development and training that letters does. I think letters is solid for what it, for what it provides. But we do have through our current professional development through Benchmark, and then I've talked about Press a little bit through the K-eight. So really, again, that's looking at core, also looking at intervention, Tier Two, Tier Three, but then also thinking about extension. So we do have students that are at grade level and above, right? So they need to have the opportunity for extension as well as part of their lesson. I would also say that as we are moving into using the balanced literacy framework, but having structured literacy be a really core, embedded part of what we're doing in the foundations, that is a lot of what letters is as well. So looking at those foundation pieces, phonics, phonemic awareness, but explicit, explicit, systematic instruction of that. So it's not like, here, student, figure it out. But you're really having the teacher walk through minutia step by minutia step with those foundations. And then really doing a lot of cross-checking with the student and making sure that they haven't gone too far forward and lost the student, but actually, their lessons and their instructions are pacing. And that's really what we saw with the coach that we observed at Loring this summer, was really, it is very step-by-step. But then also, how do you do it in a very culturally sustained way? Because we know our students are coming in at very different, not just literacy levels, but linguistic levels. And so, again, how do you make sure that the modeling and the instructional practice that you are providing to the students, you know, is really building on their assets of what they, they know language-wise and linguistic-wise, but is also moving forward in that literacy trajectory? So I would say that really the focus this year is what letters would be focusing on. It's just, you know, that's one vendor. And we're going in the direction of utilizing Benchmark materials and resources that we have, adding in Press, because we know that there were some gaps that needed to be filled, as well as then within our own internal systems, providing more support in dyslexic characteristics and structured literacy.
Thank you.
And also, thank you for the comment on school profiles, as I talked about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I, technical question. When we talk about ICE stations, Level Four and Five, what does that mean?
Thank you for the question. And this is why I have Ms. Kate McNulty, who's Director Multilingual, because I'd rather have her come up and give a more concise explanation of it than me talk around it. So.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Chair Elson. So, the ICE station is a nationally-used test, but it's normed of what is the Common Core Espanol, because it is built and rooted in the foundations of Spanish literacy and what the language entails. And it's aligned with the ELA Common Core standards. So the four and five is actually the proficiency level. So it's students score a level one through five. And we do have been giving it through our fifth, from K-two, fifth grade. And it's provided, so four and five technically is above what we determine grade level. But Level Three is, just the way it maps out, is not quite the same as fast. So, it was a more accurate depiction to give you the four or five, because the three stands a little bit below, and then on and a little bit above. It's just the way it measured out.
Okay. I know it was a measurement. I just wasn't sure.
Yeah.
What that meant, so where they were on the measurement. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, questions? So, as we go. So as we go forward, you know, welcoming students back to school and using some of this money, Esser Three money that we've been giving, American Rescue Plan funds, I know 20% has to be used on learning loss. And clearly, this presentation shows us tonight that for a lot of our students, there was some learning loss. Is there anything that we've learned going forward that will help us with students this coming school year?
Thank you, Chair Ellison. I think, you know, your question of is there, I guess, what have we learned over the course of the last fifteen to eighteen months? And I think, or a couple of things we're looking at doing. You saw this summer where we implemented some resources with Esser Two dollars. So trying to accelerate the implementation of those in anticipation of the Esser Three money, taking the opportunity for summer school where we had, again, a chance to reengage and connect with kids. And I think that's one thing we definitely learned, that our students thrive when they are engaged, and those connections are really critical and essential. So I think that's part of the development of our plan for Esser Three is to, again, look at those opportunities that may be able to extend beyond the summer, outside of the school day even, enrichment opportunities, connections beyond just the normal brick and mortar. We've heard a little bit around professional development tonight. And knowing that, again, it's not just the information that we share at the beginning of the school year, it's that job-embedded practice. And I think, as described already, it's very intentional. When you've got a classroom full of students and you've got an adult teaching, and then you've got someone else who's there to supplement and coach, that's time-consuming. It's very intensive. It requires a great deal of confidence in terms of the person who's being vulnerable with someone there in the classroom. But I think what we've learned is that we know we need that just-in-time support. And you can't just have professional development at the start. At the end, you have to have it throughout. So I think you'll see some work with the Esser Three money around that as well. And that's very time-intensive and it's very financially intensive. So we're hoping to, through that practice, not only develop the skills immediately to support the students, but to build capacity in our employees. So now you, as it was described, you have moving from the coach in the classroom to a team coming together and sharing ideas and looking at ways to, again, maximize what their skills are in support of the students. So those are a few things that I think, just off the top of my head, that I know we've learned. And as I mentioned, you know, we have to have a growth mindset. We have to have a problem-solving mentality, not only for the modeling for our students, but just because of where we are and where we've been in the last fifteen months. There's, you know, there's more than one way to move forward, and we have to look at it with creative, proactive, problem-solving solutions.
Thank you. I think Senior Officer Fearing talked about some software that we learned the students did well with, and I think Director Caprini mentioned it. Director Ins talked about it too. Are we looking at being able to continue using some of that for our students?
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Dr. Fearing to talk a little bit about that, but also just the context of, if you go back eighteen months ago, again, we were a district that was not a universal access for technology. And we've since made the declaration and the realization that we can no longer operate that way. We have to have devices available for our students for that, for the purposes of, you know, inclement weather, for the purposes of actually having it be one more tool and resource in a learning model. And so you'll see that again as part of our investment going forward with our Esser Three dollars potentially. And then, Dr. Fearing, maybe you want to highlight again some of the different software items that we're, I guess I want to be mindful of, we're not expanding for the purposes of, you know, having thirty-two different flavors of, you know, software, but to really be intentional about how this is, again, aligned to our core instruction and our differentiation for tier-two and tier-three with our multi-tiered systems of support. So, Dr. Fearing, if you could add some, please?
Yeah, so I think one of the things after we came out of the distance learning last school year, we wanted to see what software or virtual technology really had a positive impact on students. And we wanted to actually include that in our regular budget allocation. Because, again, with Esser, it's grant-funded, you know, it will go away. And so we wanted to make sure that whatever we found worked well last school year, that we were able to actually bring it into our regular budget process so that we could then keep continuing through sustainability. So things that I mentioned, DreamBox, Lexia. We also are making sure that we have CSO licenses for all of our teachers to continue. Many of them found it as a really great opportunity just to connect with parents. Even though coming back in person, it's a platform that they can use for parents to then see, you know, the activities or assignments, things coming up. And then we also had, let's see, I want to think, like, Newzella, different types of software. I want to say software, but it's not really software, I'm missing the word. But it's an opportunity for students to engage online through social studies and ELA, where they are actually putting collections together virtually for students to be able to read online, to have access to texts, you know, through current events or through different themes like social justice, activism. And then these collections, teachers were able to put these together for students. We had a lot of music and art-type of software that came to be in. Most of them were actually teacher-generated. They came to us and said, hey, this would be a great opportunity. And then when we surveyed them at the end of the year, they said, yes, we'd like to keep it because we'd like to incorporate it in our in-person learning. But it was important for us then to keep those as part of our regular budget. And I think with Esser, then you have the opportunity that if there are others that teachers want to try, that's a great place to, you know, try a proof of concept, see if it's really working because it is grant-funding. But if it does, then that's where we'd want to tie it into our regular budget for sustainability. So it's not a come-and-go type of thing. So very innovative ideas that we got from our teachers. They were just discovering different things that they could utilize online. And again, to point out, we are not expecting our students to be, you know, staring at a screen the whole time in person. But what you're finding is that there's some tools available out there that can actually help with differentiation to provide the teacher more time in another area. But again, it's never to supplant the in-person instruction that we would expect in a classroom. But there is ways to augment what you have within the time that you have that we have seen positively impact students.
Yeah, I can just share. I mean, we did a lot of talking with students as part of trying to understand what are some lessons learned. And so, you know, certainly, technology, I think it reinforced the need that, I understand that some students do thrive with the use of technology. Our teachers gained skills, better understanding how to integrate technology into instruction. Student voice, we've always talked about the need to educate the whole child, but it's really pushed us to really look at engagement, things such as morning meeting, focusing on student voice is something that's been critical, that will carry over into the year. Parent engagement, I think that because of the pandemic, our schools did a fantastic job reaching out. Parents said they really appreciated the one-on-one phone calls and contact. And so we did a better job thinking through how to incorporate that into our daily practice. So we see some different practices of parent engagement and a better understanding of how engaged our parents are and the different ways that parents do stay engaged. So that was an understanding. And then I think diagnostics, so we gained a better understanding of how to use the diagnostics that we showed here, moving away from assessments for prediction to actually going more into, and which is our core value, of assessing with a better understanding of how to support student learning. And so, again, those are skills that are going to carry over into the year. So there are some understandings and growths that we did as professionals moving forward that I think we can expect to see next year, or this year, rather.
Thank you. Yeah, like Director Ins, you know, the last year and a half, wish it didn't happen. But since it did, I'm hopeful that we've learned some things that we can go forward and help our students. Director, is any other questions? Director Cereal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Still, like, having difficulties in here. So maybe I missed, I don't know if anybody asked the question, but I'm just a little, like, still confused into the data that was not provided for middle school academics. Can you just provide, you know, a brief data on how our middle school students are doing? And if you don't have that, you know, it would be great to get that via email. Thank you.
Yeah, I can certainly put together a summary for you. I mean, there's a, you know, I think we did provide some data regarding middle school, but let me put together a slide deck for you just on middle school.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. So thank you. Seeing no other questions, I want to thank Superintendent Graff, Senior Officer Moore, Senior Officer Fearing, and your teams for this presentation. So a lot of information, and thank you. I'm going to now adjourn this meeting. Our next board meeting is at 5:30 on September fourteenth. So, good night.